Susie, we'll do roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor Proten Salzweil.
Here.
And Mayor Juarez Gadsden.
I'll look for a motion to excuse Mike's meeting tonight.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, um, look for approval of the consent agenda for tonight? Might be any changes or anything?
No.
Okay, we're not going to knock off the law resolution.
We're gonna talk about that.
Oh, we're gonna talk about it.
We're still gonna talk about it.
Well, that'll look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, citizens' discussion for items not on the agenda.
You haven't voted.
We'll do roll call.
Oh, you didn't. Oh, sorry.
You didn't vote on the absence of the mayor. You said you.
I haven't done one in a while, so thank you for your. Look for, uh, Susie, vote for the absence of the mayor of all.
Mayor Proten Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll look for a vote for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Mayor Proten Salzweil.
Yes. Now, we'll vote for citizens' discussion for items not on the agenda. Anybody online, Susie? Oh.
So, um, I'm Jake Davenport, five twenty-seven Lafayette Street. Um, tonight I'm here to speak on behalf of the Community Center Committee. So I'll know a little about our committee, to give you an update. Um, our committee is made up of practically twelve people. We've been meeting about twice a month now. Um, our committee, born in two thousand nineteen, to study the possibility of bringing a community center to our community. Um, so twenty nineteen was when we sort of like formed our committee and decided, you know, what direction we wanted to go. Um, twenty twenty, we raised roughly two thousand dollars to complete a feasibility study and needs assessment. And, um, twenty, like, our focus now has been just sort of taking all that information and deciding what direction we want to go with it. Um, let's see here. Okay, so, um, okay, so some of the things we're working on now is partnerships, such as with the YMCA, the whole school district, um, several businesses to strengthen our mission. And we're hoping that this can be successful. There's been approximately six attempts from the research. We have found to bring a community center to a whole. So, you know, this is hopefully the sixth, sixth and last time that we have to study this. Um, I guess, I guess that's really all I have as far as an update. Is there any questions that anyone has about the community center and what we're doing?
Well, I know you've got, have got this too big, but I think it'd be good to read to the public, uh, the possible questions that were in here, because they're really good questions, uh, and then the answers that go along with those questions.
Okay, so, um, so I guess a few frequently asked questions. Um, so number one, are we going to be competing with the Y? Um, so our focus is not to compete with the Y. Our, our goal is to complement some of the services already provided by the Y. And then maybe at some point bring about collaboration with the Y, so that we can, you know, strengthen our, our community and strengthen the, the main mission of bringing our community together, which is our main focus with the community center is to provide a community space where everyone can come together and meet. Um, so how much will this cost? According to the feasibility study, our estimated cost is about seventeen to eighteen million. But a lot of that depends on how many amenities we provide in the community center. Um, so the question, will the community center ever pull? The answer is, that's the direction we're wanting to go with it. Um, so with the pool, it's kind of, we don't know exactly what direction we're gonna go with the pool, whether it's gonna be a recreational pool or a, like, a competitive pool or maybe a both, you know, it's just, that's kind of unknown at this point. So the, like, so the deal's to make a recreational and competitive pool. It's like a recreational pool is a few degrees warmer, and it's, you know, for like families to go swimming for the day or whatever. As competitive pool is more like, you know, a swim, a swim team or something like that. So as far as where the community center will be located, um, there's some good properties we are looking at. I cannot disclose exactly where those properties are at this time, but we are looking at potential properties right now. Um, and probably a big question that people might know, um, will taxes go up? Um, our, our goal is to not increase taxes, but it's kind of hard to say exactly where it's gonna, where that issue is gonna go. Um, I'm, I'm only, I will say from, from what I learned through this is that a lot of community centers are funded through some sort of village or bondage proposal, but there are a few out there that are privately funded through, like, donations and stuff. So it's really hard to say, you know, where the money is gonna go until we know exactly what, what, what direction we're gonna go with the, with the facilities and stuff. Um, okay, then. So, so the, the, the community center regardless, of whether there's like a village or bondage proposal, there's probably gonna be some sort of membership fee for the community center. It's not gonna just be a walk-in sort of thing, more than likely. Um, so, so, but, but, but we're trying to keep the cost as minimal as possible, so, you know, it's, it's accessible for a lot of people. Um, so, yeah, I guess that's all I have. Is there any other questions?
Jake, what kind of feedback have you gotten from the townships around here as far as, are some of those people on your committee as well?
Oh, you, you, yes, all right, our committee is made up of, uh, people from, well, City Hall, I see me, and then, uh, the Old Township, Regent Township, one or two members are from Brown Township, South and Out, so, um, I think there might be one or two members from Grant Township, but, you know, our, our committee is made up of people from all different areas of our community. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So, some of the stuff they want is they're looking for a big chunk of property to this, somewhere in the twenty acre range, and.
How much?
Like, twenty acres to do the whole complex, I mean.
These could be on city water and.
Yes, that's very important that it gets in that area where the gas and city services can be up to.
So a place that big definitely wouldn't be outside the city. I don't know if we got a twenty acre lot anywhere.
I don't think we do either.
I don't wish.
Maybe, maybe about a hundred would be easier to us. There you go.
Exactly. Okay, any other, uh, citizens' discussions for items on agenda? Anybody online, Susie? Okay, well, that will move on to old business. Mike, we'll start with the COVID-19.
Yeah, just the only thing really to add, um, we will be opening City Hall to the public next Monday. Um, all employees who want to be vaccinated will be vaccinated. Um, so our plan is to open that day. Um, my understanding is Light and Power are gonna open up a week after. But we're looking, we're looking back to reopen and hopefully the, you know, the numbers go down. That's all I have on COVID-19.
So, Mike?
Yep, um, in front of you, I gave you all an updated budget as to how much, how much of the money, how much is outstanding to get through Wolverine's work and what, what we had after, after the fact. And so we're about, we have about two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars left of work um, for Wolverine and the consultants involved with the, with the vote. We have about, as of right now, I haven't updated the Chambers numbers, but we have about two hundred seven thousand, just under two hundred eight thousand dollars um, for additional things necessary for the, for the vote as we go forward. Um, I know, I know the fundraising efforts are, are winding up, but I haven't gotten an update of them out from Liz yet, but I know, I know they're in the middle of that right now. There, hopefully by the end of May, Wolverine's out of there. We only have one more, my, my understanding, I believe, we only have one more draw-up left with Wolverine for payment. Uh, we just, we just had a big bill tonight, about a hundred twenty-six thousand of consent. I don't think there's one, maybe one or two more left, but there's not a lot of work that they have to fill us for, um, going forward. So we're, we're moving along with that.
What's your follow-up on the Moran issue with some of the?
Yeah, yep, so I've been reaching out to, I've been talking to Moran. Um, if you don't know, there's some issues with the, with the form, the exterior flooring and the paint, and the painting, and I did talk to Moran on Friday. Um, they said they were gonna get back to me, but they recognize those are issues and are gonna work to correct them.
Have the bids going on for the recent middle bids for the bathrooms?
I'm working directly with the bidders, um, and actually I'm meeting, I believe both of them will have something to me sometime this week.
We have our little regular meetings.
Yep, one second, yep. Yep.
Yep.
For the address changes, I'm, Deb Ratchett.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, in regards to the issue pertaining to the address changes, I've asked Deb and Jeff Ratchett to come, um, to, to the council and explain to them what was done and why. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to them, and I have some, I have some, uh, photos I'll be sharing on the screen as well. Can you hear me, Jeff and Deb?
Yes.
All right, good evening.
Night, Eric. We, I don't know if there's glare on the screen.
Here's one of those, I don't know if I'm being.
Yeah, we can see it well.
Scroll through. All right, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, so the city, by city ordinance, the city assigns addressing, and so with this property, this was the, pretty much the original layout. This is the, one of the prints that they submitted, um, to City Council or the Planning Commission, I think it says, um, in August of last year. But this was kind of the original layout where you could see the building in the center that's white, which was the old gymnasium. It just had, on the right side, it just had a little sidewalk. And you could see the gray area up near the top, that was, um, you know, proposed paving and whatnot from King Street to go into the, into condos. So that was the, um, layout showing some, uh, proposed demolitions that they were gonna do, and if you could go to the next page link. And obviously, the addressing here was a revolutionary process. The one parcel was divided up into fifteen condos, so one address had to turn into fifteen in access points or from different streets, and so addresses have to be developed. They were at the same page. Yes, so this is part of their same print packet that shows their proposed driveway and things they're gonna put in. So you can see the condo, the new fifteen unit condo on the left, that's the long, white building on the left. And you can see up at the top where the gray pavement enters on King Street, that little box up in the top will show you on the next slide. That says, that's the proposed community entrance for the property. And you can see the entrance is in very close proximity to the garages and the condos themselves. And then when you go down to the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the gray pavement goes on to what used to be High Street, and it kind of racks around that old gymnasium building. But there's no indication there about that being an entrance or a community entrance or proposed community entrance. The only place that's designated on their print is on King Street in that box. And that next, uh, slide, Mike, will show a more exploded view of the King Street entrance. This paving that they just put in along the, uh, that gets them out to, to High Street was just put in, I think, in the last few weeks or so. So this is a close-up view of the King Street entrance, and you can see the little box with the arrow that says community entry drive. And how close the garage, garages are in condos. So we had to take an old parcel that was two nineteen High Street and create fifteen condo units and their access from King Street, so we needed to come up with a King Street address for them. And that's what we did, we came up with two twenty King Street because the south side of King Street is an even number, and two nineteen High Street was an odd number because it used to be coming off the north part of High Street. Yeah, so the next slides, we're gonna go to the fact that, you, you can go to the next one, Mike. High Street was actually vacated west of Monroe. So we'll see some of those documents next. So High Street doesn't even exist on the southern boundary of that property any longer. Right now, the only thing that exists, exists there is a parking lot. This was kind of an overview picture, we can, we can just skip by this one, Mike.
This one, Jeff?
Yeah, so this is one, this shows, so this is accesskent.com, you can go on and look at maps on access Kent through Kent County. It shows all the parcel lines and streets. So the white street lines that go along, well, the street names are actually called street center lines. So they superimpose those white lines on the streets right on the center line. So you can see as you travel along High Street, there's no white line west of Monroe. So when you look at the rest of, yes, because that's just a parking lot, there's no more High Street west of Monroe. So, so even that old gymnasium building that's two nineteen High Street right now, once those, if they develop, I don't even know what they're putting in there as space two, I just heard it's space two, but, because they put ten condos in there, that could be, um, I'd have to look, we haven't developed the address yet, but it may be three hundred North Monroe Southeast. So that would be a Monroe address because High Street no longer exists west of Monroe. And again, you can see all the white street center lines everywhere, but you don't see them in that area because that road's been vacated. So we can go on to the next slide. And that was pictures too, go ahead. But there was just a little sidewalk there, there was no access to that condo project other than King Street.
This one, Jeff?
Yeah, so this, uh, show, this was a deed that was filed, the Kent County Registered Deeds, showing the vacation of High Street. You can see on the, where you see the nine, eight, seven, six, those lots, where they kind of got extended down into High Street. So if you look at High Street east of Monroe, and then you compare that to High Street west of Monroe, you can see those parcels got extended into the roadway, and that's part of the reason High Street doesn't exist there anymore. So that, again, this is showing how those parcels got, or how those separate, um, lots got extended into the road and created that one parcel. So we can go to the next slide. Yeah, this just shows, this is the King Street entrance. You can see how close in proximity everything is to the King Street entrance, but they declared it as the community entrance. And there's only two addresses that could be assigned, either Monroe Street or King Street. Um, and King makes the most sense because it's actually on King Street. So I just kind of wanted to give you a background as to where, how that all came about, and that will be coming about two or phase two, when that old gymnasium building gets converted to whatever it gets converted to, those new parcels would have an address other than King, or other than High Street. Any other clarification about where that King Street address came from?
I, I just remember as a kid being able to drive right here on Riverwalk, all the way down and come up right there on the road. I mean, and Apple used to be there, and all I got taken away. So my question is, is when did High Street, uh, become not a street?
Well, when we vacated it.
Okay.
Yeah, when we vacated it last year.
That's what, but up till that point, it was still.
Was a street plan. It wasn't a street, but it was a street plan.
It's never been, maybe growing up, it was a playground yet. It's never been a street.
That helped me understand, thanks, thanks a lot. Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? I guess we'll go on to the bond resolution, Mike?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica, she's on virtually. Um, she's gonna explain to you what's going on, why things need to be done, and it's why we're not bringing the, the resolution tonight, and she'll have to explain.
Are we ready to talk about the bonds?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, actually.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, hi, everyone. Um, so, uh, the very last piece of this is just doing the analysis to determine the best structuring of the financing, and that involves determining which source of payment, and that dictates which statute that you use in order to issue the bond. So you have two choices here, you can do capital improvement bonds, which is sort of a generic bond, or you can do, um, revenue bonds that rely on the rates that you charge and the revenues to pay off the debt. Um, so the financial advisor is actually still running the numbers on this to make sure that it's structured in your best interest. There's a couple of parameters that will guide this decision. Um, you can't, um, you can't issue capital improvement bonds that exceed five percent of the state equalized value of the property in the city, so that's one sort of mathematical parameter that's in place. And then obviously, when it comes to revenue bonds, um, although they don't count against your overall debt limit, which is a good thing, you do need to make sure that rates won't be affected. Um, and so you need to do some, some due diligence before you decide to designate something a revenue bond. And so that's sort of the last piece of this that the financial advisor, Warren Kramer, is working on, and, um, I promise that we will have those notices of intent at your next meeting. Um, they're drafted, but I just don't know yet whether to insert the reference to the Revenue Bond Act or reference to Act thirty-four, which would make it all a capital improvement bond. So, um, those are the, the last few determinations to be made, and then we can get those published and be off and running. Do you have any questions about, about those considerations?
I'm good, anybody else?
I'm good, anybody else?
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, we'll go to the Line Shack?
Yep, I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie, um, because they're bored about this last week.
Thank you, uh, councilmembers, thank you for having me. Um, memo's been provided in your packet, but at the April Lowlight Power Board meeting, uh, Lowlight Power Board continued our discussions on the property located at one fifteen Riverside Drive, commonly referred to as the Line Shack. Um, as a reminder, uh, this property went out for RFP last year and ultimately did not resolve at the sale of the property. Uh, at the time, we did receive one proposal for a total of seventy-six thousand dollars. But at the request of City Council, um, well, the Lowlight Power revisited the, uh, the topic after the last RFP did not resolve at a sale, um, and at the onset of our renewed discussions, uh, the Lowlight Power Board instructed me to have an appraisal done on the property to have, determine fair market value. Uh, at that point, I engaged Great Lakes Appraisal Company to conduct the appraisal. Lowlight Power staff has received, reviewed, and presented the final appraisal to the Lowlight Power Board. The appraisal used a sales comparison approach. Uh, it's an appraisal approach that essentially looks at, uh, as similar of properties as possible. Um, the uniqueness of this property that everyone's familiar with, created some challenges, obviously. But, you know, essentially, uh, the, the appraisal method compares recently sold properties and then adjusts based on individual characteristics to ultimately result in a determination of the fair market value. Uh, the appraisal from Great Lakes Appraisal Company concluded, uh, that the estimated fair market value of that property is right at a hundred thousand dollars. During our board meeting, it was noted and has since been noticed, or noted, um, earlier today, that the appraisal does not necessarily make a specific adjustment for the fact that that property is, is waterfront property. So, um, you know, right from the onset, we knew it was gonna be a unique property, so uh, any, any comparison was undoubtedly gonna involve some, some price adjustments, you know. But due to the fact that Lowlight Power has no operational need for the Line Shack and the property will make, remain costly to continue to own, along with the potential benefits to the community associated with the redevelopment of the property, uh, the Lowlight Power Board has decided to pursue the sale of the property again. I will remind, uh, City Council that Lowlight Power cannot own real property, only the city can, so the, only the city, and City Council can, uh, dispose or divest of, of that property, but ultimately, uh, Lowlight Power is responsible for maintaining that building, and if a sale were to proceed, those, uh, those funds associated with that sale would ultimately go back to Lowlight Power. At the, uh, conclusion of, uh, the discussion, it was recommended, uh, unanimously supported by the Lowlight Power Board to recommend to City Council to issue a request for proposals for the sale of the property of one fifteen Riverside Drive with a minimum bid of the appraised value of the property, which was a hundred thousand dollars, and then pursuant to any requirements outlined in the city charter. Other than that, are there any questions that I might be able to answer or, or any curiosities?
Well, I got one for you, Charlie. What are you gonna do on the bid? Nobody bids a hundred thousand.
So we, we are, um, prepared for that possibility, um, and during the board meeting, we had the discussion and ultimately acknowledged that. during the board meeting, we had the discussion and ultimately acknowledged that, you know, it would be in the best interest to, to try and, and receive the hundred thousand dollars. Um, but in order to, to receive that bid, um, we're going to need to expand our marketing reach, some potentially reach a larger audience. Uh, and then ultimately, we may have to, um, temper our expectations if bids ultimately don't come in, but, um, felt it was appropriate to start out seeking the value of that property. But we do realize that it's a eventual, or a potential, um, reality. Uh, but we're hoping that through a, a little bit more of extended, uh, opening and through wider marketing reach, we can obtain that. But, but ultimately, if it doesn't reach that, that level, I would, uh, recommend carrying that back to the Lowell Lake Power Board for further discussion.
Yeah, because this is the second time we're gonna do this, and we, we didn't want it once, but there was an issue, correct, Mike?
That's correct.
I don't, can you refresh us what that is?
We didn't, we didn't put the notice in the paper two times.
Two times, that's what it was, so. That's why it's back up again, so. Hope we get a, I hope we get two hundred thousand.
I think we do.
Charlie, at one time, you, you were talking about three appraisals. Is this the company you decided to get the appraisal from and not the other two?
Yes, yeah, we just, we just got one appraisal. I, I engaged three companies and was having discussions, compared, there's different, uh, appraisal methodologies. So, you know, ultimately, uh, we chose this, or I chose this one based on price and recommendations.
Yeah, I just didn't want everything, it was just a single one you had looked out to.
Oh, no, yeah.
With that, I guess, um, make a recommendation to Mike to follow up on getting the proper papers and notices out there and, and let's start, see if we get some opportunities to sell it.
They're gonna handle the RFP process like Power is, and then Suzie and I will make sure the notification goes out properly.
I don't think we need to vote on it, because there's not any recommendation.
No.
Just like everybody's approval. Thank you, Charlie. Are you gonna stay right up there for this, um?
I'll say, I'll say, I'll stay right here.
So, we'll go on to business, and we'll look at the Klosner Properties LLC easement acceptance.
All right, again, thank you, Matt. Uh, at the March Lowell Lake Power Board meeting, uh, Lowell Lake Power Board approved and recommended to City Council for final approval, a utility easement agreement with Klosner Properties. Um, the, the agreement, which is included in your packet, uh, will allow Lowell Lake Power to install electric infrastructure at the property at one twenty-six Southwest Avenue that's currently being developed. Ultimately, this easement would allow us to serve that property and some of the surrounding properties. Due to the fact that it will go on to feed additional properties, uh, is the reason why we're seeking approval of the easement, but is the, uh, Lowell Lake Power Board's recommendation for City Council to approve the utility easement agreement with Klosner Properties LLC.
Any questions?
Make a motion that we approve this easement.
I'll support.
Uh, any other questions? Now, we'll look for a vote, Suzie.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Salzweil?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was, was that the resolution six dash twenty-one, Mike? Did that sound?
That's...
Any easement agreement?
I think there's, there's an agreement, and I think there's a resolution.
Resolution, yes.
The project will be approved.
Okay, well, I guess we'll make a...
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, uh, zero six dash twenty-one.
And support?
Support.
Suzie, we'll ask for a vote.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Salzweil?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
The Arbor Day proclamation, right?
Well, that'd be you. That's you.
Oh, that's me? Oh, right, boy, no wonder he didn't wanna come tonight. Um, I guess this is, uh, so I guess I'm going to read this proclamation to the best of my ability. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed in the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that especially be set aside for planting of trees and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and or as Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clear the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economical vitality of businesses area, and beautifies our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Salzweil, Mayor of Towne and City Lo, do by规定的 every last Friday in April as Arbor Day in the City Lo, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you, nineteenth of April in the year twenty twenty-one. Anything else we need to do?
That's all I gotta do.
Good job.
Sorry, no problem. And I did not fully read that. Whereas, all right, I guess we'll go to, see, part-time officer?
Yes.
Other votes, David?
One of the issues resulting from the August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty shooting involving former police officer J. C. Diaz was that we realized our part-time officers have no criminal defense protection in the event they are involved in an officer-involved shooting or any use of force situation. Our full-time officers, uh, in the Fraternal Order of Police Bargaining Unit have legal defense protection they pay for as part of their union dues. As is quite common, our, our insurance carrier does not provide criminal legal defense for our officers in the event of a shooting. However, in the event of any civil action brought about against them, our insurance carrier would represent them and the city. Chief Hurst, Sergeant Van Salkman, and I have looked at this matter in depth. We have concluded that we need to mandate the part-time officers have legal defense protection as a condition of employment. There has been discussion on various options they can, they could pursue. After further review, the police union and I agree that part-time officers should be allowed to be included in the collective bargaining agreement. This would allow them to pay dues to the Fraternal Order of Police and have criminal defense protection. We've crafted out a letter of understanding that recognizes part-time police employees as members of the bargaining unit. They have been excluded from most benefits dictated by the collective bargaining agreement. They are not given seniority, healthcare benefits, pension, vacation, or sick leave. The only benefits of the collective bargaining members will have are they will be eligible for court time payments equivalent to the few full-time officers, which they already have now. Time and a half if they work on a contractually recognized holiday. They do not have this now, and I have no issue with this being available to them as they do fill in for some of those holidays. Beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, the part-time range will increase from eighteen sixty an hour to twenty dollars per hour. This rate is in line with our comparable cities who have part-time officers. Future increases will be reviewed annually at the discretion of the Chief of Police, which is currently the standard. In discussion with representatives of the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police, former Officer Diaz's criminal defense is in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars, of which will be completely paid for by the Legal Defense Fund, as Officer Diaz was a dues-paying member to the fund. The legal defense offered to Officer Diaz is only available at Apple Feet Bargaining Unit members statewide. Swarm police personnel are not subject to the right to work loss. If there is a collective bargaining agreement for unit for police officers, which include part-time officers, officers covered by a collective bargaining agreement must pay dues as a condition of employment. We have eight part-time officers with the Lowell Police Department at the moment. I recommend Lowell City Council approval letter of understanding of the Lowell Police Officers Association pertaining to part-time officers being added to the bargaining unit. Um, this is an issue that Chris and I are very well versed in now, and they gotta, the officers gotta have something, and, um, you know, like, so we looked at different things, and we felt this was actually the least costly for the officers, and, um, really, they're not, I mean, they're, they're, they're not getting, I mean, they're really not getting a lot of of things by us doing this, so, um, I think it's necessary.
Anybody have any questions? Um, I had one under paragraph six. It says, all these other things are included except the found like twenty-five through sixty-five. I, I don't know what those are, and is it important, I mean...
Yeah, there, I, I went and verified it. Basically, it's all benefits that would be given to the full-time officers. Seniority, vacation, healthcare, um, all, the wage, the wage, wage structure. All of those things are, are spelled out in the collective bargaining agreement for the police officers, and those are specifically taken out of this. So, I made sure to verify that that nothing was getting slipped past that, that didn't get, that we had an issue with, and I don't.
And did we get legal look at this? Were we good, or did we need them?
We didn't need to. No, this was something that between Chris and I, we could, we could have dropped.
Okay. So, with that, do we need to, to vote on this tonight, then?
I would prefer some action.
So, we'll look for a motion to recommend the City of a letter of understanding with the Lowell Police Officers Associations pertaining to part-time officers.
I'll write that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, with that, we'll look for a vote, Suzie.
Mayor Proton Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to Parks Board's Party Plan, and I think it would be Dan? Yep. Are you there, Dan?
I am here.
Okay, you're up.
Um, okay, our Parks Board has been working on putting together a party plan for the upcoming year based on the, uh, Park Recreation Master Plan. Uh, the board spent several meetings discussing it and came up with the, uh, plan that's attached. Uh, the, uh, Chairperson of the Board, Paula, is here to make the presentation and the discussion. Hi, Paula.
Hello. Hi, nice to meet you, everybody. I wanted to also introduce myself. Dan did, though. So, my name's Paula Mary Dorf. I live on Roberta Jane Drive. I've been here for seventeen years and, um, yeah, and I'm new to the chairman position, so there's a couple things. I'd love to tell you about the priorities, and then I have a question for you as well, so. Um, I don't know how much detail you want. Do you want me to go through every single thing, or just give you a synopsis of what we're thinking?
Whatever you feel comfortable. I, I like what I see here, so whatever you wanna do. Mike, you have a question?
Okay, well, um, Dan did a good job of explaining it. Um, basically, what we did this year is we looked at, you know, we get a lot of requests from a lot of people, a lot of different things, and every single thing is wonderful. You could, you could argue for everything that comes to us that should be, should be taken care of, should be fixed, because it's always a great idea. You know, there's never a bad idea improving our city. And so, um, trying to keep us focused on the things that we had, we had put into the master plan, because the master plan, we put so much time into it. We had gone out to the community. We had gotten input from the community, and, and, um, I feel strongly that if we all focus on the same things, then we can get a lot more done instead of doing a lot of little things around. So, I thought, um, I know the city's doing a lot of things I don't have any visibility to. We don't have visibility to. Dan does a great job of keeping us informed. But, um, we thought if we could somehow help the city focus on what is in that master plan, um, you know, kind of take the things off that have already been taken care of. So, Dan did a great job of letting us know what's already been done. And then of the things that still remained, we all put our heads together and we prioritized them so that we could take the, the big, huge lists and give you guys just a shorter list of where we see our top priorities in each of the parks. And, um, generally, this doesn't necessarily mean you guys are going to do these things. We understand these are recommendations. But, um, and the order, of course, you'll do what with, you know, things that happen. Maybe there's another project that's gonna be already working on one of the areas, so you can just kind of throw that in at the same time. But we thought at the very least, then you would have this information to use as you're making decisions. So, um, to just give you a, a high-level, number-one thing that came out in every single one of our parks is signage. We didn't know what the city was planning. Um, Mike, we, we've talked with Mike before. I know there's been conversations about improving the signage, creating consistency throughout the city, all of those things. Um, we don't have a definite, we haven't sat down and figured out exactly what we want for signage, because we didn't want to move forward with that in conflict with what you guys were thinking for the rest of the city. But, but generally, um, we all pretty much agree that the signs, if you go to a single park, you don't necessarily know what's available in that park. You don't know what other parks are in the area, so we were hoping that there could be something that ties all the parks together. You know, you are here, and we have five other parks in the City of Lowell, kind of thing. So, things like that. Um, so that came out at the top of every single one of them, and then generally, you'll have, you know, anything that's ADA, increasing our handicap access is on the list. Repairing things, adding some fun stuff, and you guys are welcome to look through them. Um, Creekside Park, you know, add some parking spaces, fill, crack and fill the pathways, things like that. So, that's the general overview. You have, um, let's see, some of the ones that might surprise you that may be a little bit different is the Scout Park. There, um, there's a lot of opportunity at the Scout Park with, um, improving the river access, boat and canoe launch, you know, things like that that don't currently exist. We are talking to the Scouts, just kind of getting their sense to try to partner with them. Um, there is a, it's a question of, um, you know, there is some concern, just to be fully transparent, there's some concern, if I understand it correctly, that, you know, increased people coming to that area, they are concerned that there will be vandalism to the building, and, and, but they have the opposite point of view of, well, if there are more people there, then it would be harder to do vandalism, because there'd be more traffic, right? So, that's, so that's, those are all those things are being considered, and, um, yeah, so this is our list, and we, um, this, this, um, master plan lasts through... We have to do a new one submitting to the, um, Michigan DNR every five years, and in the spring of twenty twenty-two, we're gonna begin creating a new one as well. So, just to give you a little scope on that. So, does anybody have any questions on those priorities and how we reached this, or where we're going from here?
Oh, one thing, uh, Jim, one thing I'd like to see you do is reach out to our city webpage and see if we can get some improvements on that, what is at each park, what it gives and offers as well. Um, and so, there'd be an actual map on, on that part of it, showing park locations and things like that part of it. So, if that's something on it, that, that came from a concerned citizen that I had had a conversation with weeks ago, and he brought that up, so I, I was in my memory to bring up tonight.
Yeah, we have definitely talked about that, because it's a question, that's the chicken and egg part of it. Is that the city that owns the website, handles all of those things? Is that the Parks Commission? But absolutely, it certainly couldn't hurt to update that website, and I think the Parks Commission, we all agree that that is a priority. It was just not in the master plan, so we're trying to stick with the things that were on the master plan and prioritize those as well. So, yes, absolutely. If you guys are updating the website, we would love that. We did a lot of work, um, identifying all of those services in those parks as well. So, um, reach out to us if we can help with any of that. That'd be great.
Paul, I have a question, uh, first. Thanks for doing what you're doing. Um, this is for Mike. How big is Scout Park? If, if all the other parks I can picture in my head relative to boundaries. Do you have any ideas?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how big it is, because there's all the private land that kind of blurs into it when you walk around.
Yeah, I would have to get out my, uh, Park Rec Master Plan to see what the actual acreage is. I don't have that with me, but it's, it's a fairly good-sized park, so if you go up there, I believe it goes into the trees back to the, uh...